Okay, it's seven o'clock. Let's call the October twenty eighth, twenty twenty zoning board appeals to order. My name is Stevens, the chairman, also President Tom Manning, Secretary Floyd Crawford, regular member, Scott Rosaro, another member, and Bill Manz, alternate member. Also present, Tom Zanari, CEO and planning for the town, and Kara Holon, who is the recording secretary. This is a continuation of a meeting that was opened on October fourteenth. It was not a forum, so we opened the meeting and continued to this evening. So I think everybody knows the rules, the sign. And Mr. Manning, I guess this would be the appropriate time to read the call of the meeting.
Okay. Can everybody hear me? I'm reading the call of ZBA twenty dash oh six, one eighty-five Ford Hill Road. Rick Norris, Town of Groton applicant, Town of Groton owner. Variance of section eight point four dash seven D to allow a digital sign to allow a sign eighteen point two five square feet where twelve feet is permitted, to allow three display colors where two are permitted, and of section eight point four dash eight A to allow three freestanding signs at the street frontage where two are permitted, and to allow a forty-four point eight square foot sign where eight square feet is permitted. To look, to locate a freestanding sign for the Groton Middle School, pin number two six zero eight zero nine zero six three eight eight six E GR zoning district. Okay. And for the record, I have reviewed all of the mailings, the copies of which were given to me at the last meeting. I've reviewed them all, and they meet the time and the people who were mailing were to go to. So I, I think we're ready to proceed. Everything is acceptable. Okay.
The mailing in order?
The mailings were found in order, yes.
Okay, so we're set to go?
Yes, we are. I thought I said that, but.
Okay, sorry. My, my, my phone's here for Rick out the back, so even though I have, unless you get close enough to the thing. So I guess we're set to proceed, and I guess representing the challenge is Mr. Norris.
Yes. Good evening, gentlemen. I'm pleased to come speak with you again. It's been some time. Seems like every, every eight, ten years, I get a chance to come talk to the ZBA about something. I also have with me tonight Amy Samuelson from the Slam Cooperative, who was the architect on the job. So I'll, if the commission will indulge me for a few minutes, I want to address the letter that you received as part of the package from, from, from Deb Jones from the P and Z Commission. There was a couple of interesting items in there I'd like to appraise you with, give you a little bit of our story, and then turn over, turn it over to Amy to go through the sign details and our various variance requests for our sign at the bottom of the hill.
Rick, could I interrupt you for a second?
Yes, sir.
Would it make sense for me to, to read into the minutes that letter? I have it in front of me, and that would give everybody information relative to what the message was in that letter?
Yes, either, either you can do that, or I can read it as a part of your package, I believe.
Well, Ed, how do you want to proceed on that? Do you want me to read it in, Secretary, or do you want? Because usually we read it in at, at some point during the meeting.
Exactly.
Anyway.
So I'm seeing reason to also our plans. At the appropriate time.
It's a letter from Planning and Zoning directed to ZBA. You should read it.
Okay. Ed, is that all right?
Yep, fine.
Okay. At its meeting on October thirteenth, two thousand twenty, the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed the referral listed below above and made the following comments. And it's the subject ZBA twenty dash oh six, Groton Middle School Sign, one eighty-five Ford Hill Road, Rick Norris, Town of Groton, an applicant and Town of Groton owner. And it goes on to say, at its meeting on the thirteenth, two twenty, the Planning and Zoning Commission was not in support of the variance as submitted. They stated concern that the additional signage and a three-colored display at a busy intersection would be a distraction to drivers. They felt that a unified sign program to identify the three uses assessed by this driveway would be safer and more appropriate for the site, and that this, a separate sign does not complement the style of the existing Grass O Tech High School sign. Planning and Zoning Commission recommends denying the very requested variances. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. First, they talk about, obviously not being in support for additional things, additional signage. Right now, I think you're aware, and I did include in your package some pictures of the Grass O Tech sign. The only other sign that's a permanent sign is the small wooden sign that you see about town that, that notices all the town locations, for example, the Public Works Garage, or the parks. It's basically a park sign for Sutton Park. And then there's our proposed sign. A little bit of history about that. That sign, that sign, that sign, let's say the Grass O Tech sign, was approved by the ZBA in twenty sixteen, or actually January twenty seventeen. Our project went to referendum in November of twenty sixteen. So they're very close to the same, you know, basically same starting point, if you will. We had really, they talk about in this letter, distraction to drivers, the, the busy intersection, the time the intersection is the busiest is in the morning where parents only from the middle school are supposed to enter and leave that driveway. It's at a different time, it's actually later than when the Grass O Tech buses enter and leave that driveway. So there is, there is traffic there. Our proposed sign, as Amy will show you, is, is probably about half the size, or maybe a little bit bigger than that of the Grass O Tech sign, which would go on the adjacent corner to the east. I mean, I'm sorry, to the west. There's tree cover there, a tree may had, may need to be removed. There's a telephone pole where a support wire may need to be moved. The exact location has not been laid out yet based on, on approvals of the sign design and that sort of thing. We did not have an opportunity based on the timings that happened, because we hired an architect in twenty seventeen in November. That was after the sign was approved by both the Planning Commission and the ZBA for Grass O Tech. We then had a three-month delay due to conservancy, a conservation easement on the property, so we stopped direction. We had looked at alternate entrances to the sign, and the only really safe entrance for parents was somewhere off of the Grass O Tech driveway. So during that period of time, we were also working with the state on an easement. So, and ever, and since then, we've had, of course, the COVID things. So this project has not been easy to move along, and we may be a little late coming in for the sign design, but that's kind of the way the timing worked out. Also, I guess, on the Grass O Tech sign, they were supposed to been, start construction, excuse me, in twenty seventeen. I guess they got an extension to twenty nineteen. And the first time we really had an inkling of what the sign was and where it was going to be was when they started construction, actually, in twenty eighteen. So that's when we really got the first view of it. So for us to try and do a coordination effort to put three signs on one now, I think that, you know, to, to use colloquialism, that kind of bus has already left the terminal. It would be difficult to do that. We looked at our sign design, ours, we looked at the rustic nature of the property. There's a lot of stones there, which we saved on the property to build or reconstruct stone walls that were there. Our sign, as Amy will tell you, has that sort of look to it. It is, does have a base, and it, it does have the computer-generated images on top, which, I mean, even if you can look at the pictures, and it's difficult in those pictures that the Grass O Tech sign, you can actually see three or more colors in those little pixels that you see on that, that drawing. So we're not asking, and to boot, the regulations for signage had changed between the time that the Grass O Tech sign was approved, and now our time coming to you. So I don't think we're asking for anything extreme. I'll let Amy go into some of the details of the sign, and I'd be happy then to answer any questions you may have then or, or now. But that's kind of the brief history of where we are, and this is really the last item to be completed at the school. The building's being occupied, substantially complete, we're doing punchless work, so this is really, really our last item. So if I could turn it over to Amy, unless you have some questions right now.
Okay, Scott, any questions?
Well, I'm gonna wait. I got one for concerning the Planning Commission's letter, but I'll wait on that. I'll wait for these people to finish their presentation.
Okay.
Thank you very much. So if you don't mind, I'm gonna share my screens. It'll be easier to for me to point out everything out. You're seeing the image of the sign now, I hope?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So, as Rick mentioned.
Amy, let me interrupt. This is Tom Zanari. I just want to please be descriptive, and if you can, if these are in the packet, identify what they are, because we have one commission, or one board member that's on the phone only and not viewing. Thank you.
Sure, absolutely. Okay, so as a part of the package that you've received, this is sheet A five seventy dash two ZBA. This is a drawing of the front elevation of the sign that's proposed. This shows the height of the sign at five foot, five and a half inches from grade. The width of the sign is described in our variance request as eight feet. And the sign will have stone, a fieldstone base where the words Groton Middle School will be placed, along with the Groton Falcons logo. And then a cast stone or concrete cap to that stone wall. That matches the fieldstone and cast stone cap that we have at the entrances of the school, and it's indicative of the natural materials that were found on site. On top of that plinth is where the digital sign would be placed with a metal enclosure, so that the double-sided sign has a cap and a frame around all edges. And it's quite a simple sign. We're not, we're not meaning for it to be outlandish. It's really, as I mentioned, us, to match the environment that you see around the site. This sign will be placed opposite the El Agroso sign on the same intersection, and the El Agroso sign is fifteen feet wide and eight feet tall. So this is, in fact, quite a bit smaller than the current sign that's on the site. It does have the same materials. That sign has cast stone, that sign has a digital sign with a metal enclosure. So while we didn't have the opportunity to coordinate the materials with the El Agroso Technical School design, because this predates ours, as Rick mentioned, we do think it complements it, and that it, it won't be striking, and, you know, in any way kind of different. So that, that's the, the presentation of the sign itself. I'll share with you, the, the next page in your packet is drawing sheet A five one seventy-one dash ZBA. And, and that shows the section through the sign, as I mentioned, back-to-back display panels with a, a metal panel cap, protect it from the weather. And looking at the end of it, it would be this metal panel covering the, the gap between the two back-to-back digital displays. Digital displays today come in a variety of colors. It's almost like having a television monitor, right? So we do intend to make sure that the persons at the school who have the ability and the, the, it's a phone app, or it's a computer app, actually, to control the sign, and the wording that's on the sign, will make sure that they're aware of the regulations for limiting the number of colors on the screen. Would you like me to run through each of the variances that we're requesting? Okay.
That would help.
Sure. So the first variance on, on our attachment to the application, part two, page one of two, is listed as a variance for section eight point four dash eight point A. This is to exceed the allowable quantity of signs on the property. And as had, Rick has previously stated, there is a sign for El Agroso Technical High School, and there's also a sign for Sutton Park that are pre-existing on this location.
And, and I might add, if you read the, our request there, the sign, the El Agroso sign measurements, the fourteen feet by the four feet are their display portion only.
That's right.
Doesn't include the base, because it wasn't required by regulation at that time. Whereas now we're required to include the entire sign, including the base, as, as to meet the regulation.
That's correct. So actually, to that point, I'm gonna share with you the image on page fourteen of your packet. This is the front photograph of the El Agroso Technical High School sign, and the dimensions of that sign are listed on that photograph, fifteen feet wide by eight foot tall. And again, just to, as a point of reference, metal panel sign enclosing the digital display and concrete base, which is similar, again, to the design that we're proposing. We would have the same concrete cap here and metal around our digital display, but ours is about half as long. And the base where number one eighty-nine is shown for the El Agroso is where the stone wall would be, and the word's Groton Middle School for us. Although ours is much shorter as well. This is an eight-foot tall overall, and ours is five foot, five and a half inches, or five foot six. The El Agroso, just following along the next page, you can see that they do have multiple colors. Black, white, and blue are on the screen at this particular photo. The previous sign showed just black and white, sorry, the previous photo showed just black and white. Here's the side of their sign. Again, very similar in nature to what we're proposing with a metal enclosure on the digital display portion. And lastly, page seventeen of your packet, there's a close-up of the digital display where it connects and sits on the concrete cap, which again is a very similar detail to what we're proposing. And you can see the multiple colors on their display channel. So we hope that by showing that sign photographs, you'll understand that what we're requesting is not out of line for the character of that intersection. Now I'll go back to page one of two of the variance request. The second variance that we're requesting is to exceed the allowable size for the signs at the intersection. And we're, we're suggesting a size of eight feet wide by five foot, six inches high, as you know, which exceeds the allowable eight foot, eight square feet. And as I've demonstrated, obviously, so does the El Agroso sign, and, and we're just looking to be also, you know, provide a noticeable sign for the entrance for Groton Middle School. Third variance requested is to allow for a digital sign in the GR zoning district. Currently, that is not allowed by this zone, and as you've seen, there is already one there, requesting similar. I've, I'm moving on to page two of two. The fourth variance we're requesting is on item eight point four dash seven dot D, and that's to exceed the allowable size of a digital sign. Although digital signs are not allowed by this GR Green District, they are allowed in other areas in town. And so just as a point of clarification, I wanted to make sure that we pointed out that this is larger than the allowable twelve square feet. Each digital sign is eighteen point two five square feet. And then the last variance that we are seeking is eight point four dash seven point D of your regulations, and that is to exceed the allowable number of colors. As mentioned previously, we expect that because the digital sign, it comes standard with a, a full range of colors, that it may exceed the two colors that are allowed by this, by your commission. Again, that, I'm not sure if, if the intent of your requirement was for two colors at a time to be visible, or two colors forever and ever and ever. So the fact that this, today's digital signs do come in a full range of colors, you know, I just want to make sure that this variance was also listed. So now I think we open it up for questions.
Scott?
Well, I don't think I, again, I don't think I have any questions for the applicant, but I would like, once, once we're through that questioning, I, I have some for Tom and.
Tom Manning?
I have a couple of questions. I guess I'd like a little explanation as to the use of that road, and what kind of traffic is going to the Groton Middle School?
Okay.
And let me, a couple of other things.
Sure.
And the basis is, I know that Grass O Tech, and I think my understanding is that you go up the road a little bit, and then it's, the road splits off. If you could give a little explanation of, is that a separate right-of-way, or, and who, what kind of traffic is going to be going to the Groton Middle School, school buses? I don't think, from what I understand, that that's the case, but I think I need a little more of an explanation of what kind of traffic pattern is gonna be using this.
Yeah.
And then I have a couple of other questions.
Well, let me, let me address the first one for you, sir. The, the intent and the design was to allow car traffic only. As you know, or as you may or may not know, Grass O Tech also has an easement over town property for part of their driveway. The town at one point sold the property where Grass O Tech is to the state, and we maintained that, that front area where Sutton Park is, and across to the east. So where the property line now resides, we needed an easement to intersect their road. So it intersects at a T, if you will, and you can see that on the drawing, that we, and I don't know if you have a better one for the road there, but we intersected a T across from the Grass O Tech driveway, which you see on the right. So, and you can see as it curved up to the left. The, the design anticipated parent traffic and teachers and whomever to come in and do their parent drop-off, come back down the driveway, and proceed on their way. The buses, the intent of the design was to have them come through Fitch High School, which they do. There's wayfinding signage on the site, so if you turn up the Grass O Tech driveway, you go up about six or seven hundred feet, there's a wayfinding sign that directs you to turn left, and there's also a stop sign there at that intersection, directs you to turn left onto the Grass O, I mean, onto the Groton Middle School driveway, proceed on up to the school. I've been there mornings. It doesn't look like, well, wherever located, it's hard not to be, be there in mornings. So I've seen the traffic go in and out of the Fitch High School for the buses. That seems to be working real well, and I've also observed the traffic down at the lower end, which, like I say, is predominantly cars of staff and visitors and, you know, assistants and teachers, that sort of thing. And also viewed the buses from Grass O Tech coming out, which come out a little bit earlier than we start the, the middle school. Does that answer your question or provide you enough information?
It clarifies what I had thought I had understood, but I haven't been up and driven that. I'll have to do that at some point, but, and I have a few other questions afterwards, but I, I don't want to monopolize the question period at this point. So I'm, that's fine, you explained the essence of what I was looking for. Thank you.
Yep, welcome.
Rick, why, explain to me why, looking at these drawings here, it looks at the Groton Middle School writing will be at the base of the sign, is that correct?
Yes.
So why do you need such a vast area for digital? I mean, as compared to the El Agroso sign, I mean, you're using the whole upper part.
Well, if you look at the El Agroso sign, you're, you're seeing that it's four feet high, right? Nearly four feet high, plus probably five feet long, which is twenty square feet. So how, what, what is our area on the digital portion there, Amy?
The digital portion is, is eighteen point two five feet.
Yeah, so it's commensurate in size to that.
Correct.
Maybe even a little smaller, it's just longer, so it may look like it takes up a lot more area. If you look at the Fitch High School sign, if you go that direction, it's probably very close to the way that sign looks.
The digital portion.
The digital portion is correct.
Now, this sign will be placed perpendicular to the roadway?
Yes, it'll be placed similar to the Grass O Yes, it'll be placed similar to the Grasso sign. It'll be on the on the west side of the intersection and it will be perpendicular to Fort Hill Road.
Correct.
You it from both sides coming and going.
And I believe I'm still sharing my screen.
Yep.
So I zoomed into drawing C point six, C six point four. And in looking at this, our proposed sign is, as you noted, perpendicular to Route One. As is this the El Agroso sign, and you can see the difference in size here. There's this double the length. So their digital sign is that, in fact, about the same size.
Okay. Now we still have the issue of going from two, two to three signs. Anything of them discussed about incorporating the Sutton Park sign and with the Garden Middle School sign?
It hadn't been discussed previously. It had kind of been thought about. We would then need to look at that design and potentially increase the size, I would guess. But I mean, that certainly could be an option. But right now, if you look at our our middle school, it's really the it's going to be the gem of the school system. And I think it is appropriate for that sign. And that's my personal opinion, obviously. I think it's appropriate for that to be its own own marker, if you will.
Well, in driving by there every day, it seems that the Sutton Park sign is set considerably back from the road.
Right.
So if you're coming down, if you're coming down the hill heading towards downtown Groton, and you have the middle school sign. And it's on a block, the Sutton Park sign.
Well, you can sign the Sutton Park signs to four by fours that could be moved to wherever we thought would be appropriate.
Right. And the Sutton Park sign is actually parallel or diagonal to the street where this one will be perpendicular to the street.
That's what I, I guess that's my point. Why can't the middle school and the Sutton Park sign be incorporated into one sign that will pop along to the town of Groton? So you can eliminate one of the one of the variance requests by doing that.
I understand.
Hey, Ed, this is Tom Manning talking. Could I, could I ask, could I ask one other question that I think may be along the same vein that crossed my mind when I knew about this tonight?
Go ahead.
Has anybody approached the state to try to utilize, and I get, and I understand it's a minefield. But has anybody made a an approach to the state relative to the El Agroso sign? And I know it's a very expensive sign. I watched that put it be put in and try to come up with a plan that would allow for that one location to be utilized in some configuration to to advertise the two schools at one time. And I understand that this is not something that you would want to tread on lightly. However, without at least approaching the state. I think some of what we read with the comments of the plant, you know, planning and zoning. That might address or at least address their concerns.
To to bring a little comedy into this thing, I had told people we should take the GR, take the AAS off, move the all over, put a T O N on it, and we'd be done. But that's obviously not not going to happen. Our dealings with the state have been very difficult here. In fact, we expected the principal to come talk because she, for some reason, thought the sign we're proposing for the middle school was larger than that sign. And I don't know where that idea came from. We could have that discussion. I don't expect knowing and having my dealings with the state throughout this project and other projects. I don't expect that would be fruitful, but if you feel so desired, we could certainly move forward with some discussion with the state about that. Had we known that that sign was going to be there, we could have done some coordination earlier on to you know, to belay that problem, if you will. But unfortunately, you know, we came into the end of the game a little later after things were already in the process of being constructed.
Was nobody in the town aware that the El Agroso folks had to come before our board to get a variance?
Well, then the planning, obviously, planning, the planning department was, but it never got filtered down to the project side. And whether that was because we were working on so many other things like the conservation easement and the easement for the driveway and those sorts of things or whatever, all I all I can say is, you know, for some reason, the word never got to the to the project on it.
So is this sign an afterthought? Or was this in the original plans of the whole school?
No, it's not an afterthought. There was always the a need, if you will, for a sign for the school, just like we have for every other school. So the sign itself was not an afterthought. It comes late in the game because of the issues we were running in to constructing the sign and other issues that the architect had to deal with along the way. So the sign was always the intent, and it may show up as a line on the early drawings. But when we went through the initial site approval with P and Z, of course, then it was planning and zoning separately. The intent was to come back at a later date with a sign plan and have that presented. So that's kind of where we are right now. And that that was the direction that came out of planning at that time also.
Okay, Mr. Kravas, you're awful quiet. Do you have any comments or questions?
I'm just listening to all these things that everybody's saying and a few things. There was only one thing I wanted to ask. That the lady there said that that was made with natural stone, I think, under the signs, but I I remember concrete being poured there and made made pieces of concrete under those signs.
Oh, that's the rotten middle school sign, yes. I mean, I'm sorry, the the Grasso tech sign is all basically concrete. Either free cast or poured.
Right. The El Agroso sign is all concrete for its base, but the one we're proposing for Groton Middle School has a concrete cap below the digital portion, but has a stone veneer like a fieldstone wall would look.
Okay, I I watch it. Sorry, I watch all that stuff go up every day. So that's why I asked. But that's about all I got right now.
Thank you, Floyd. Mr. Minister is an author, so I'm participating in the in the hearing this evening. I'd like to be an observer. You heard Mr. Minister?
I agree. I'm just not participating. I'm observing.
Scott, I'll go back to you for questions.
Did you say me?
Yes, Scott.
Yes, yeah, Scott Rissado here. I think the question was answered. The principal question I had was when Grasso Tech erected their sign was were the same sign regulations in place at that time. And I think the answer was yes.
The answer, I believe, is no, because the regulations were just changed recently and.
Well, that's like, yeah, that's okay. So that's my question, sir, is that this, your application is addressing the newest set of regulations were recently changed. Is the the zone, has the zone been changed as well?
I I don't know. Maybe Tom can answer that for you. I don't believe it was a GR zone previously, but I can't answer that a hundred percent.
The zone was changed.
The zone was changed, huh?
Correct.
Okay. And that was just recent when they did their recent zoning revisions.
Last October, correct.
Last, yeah, so it's a year ago. And the school was started before last October, the school construction. Is that correct?
Yes, we.
So and and the other, the other part of the question, I think, was answered as well, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna rephrase it. It sounds to me like the state never came before the ZBA to address the compromising the the existing regulations at that time. Is that true?
No, in fact, and I probably should let Tom answer that, but I have pulled the file and there is a zoning or variance in the file that the state received for that sign.
Oh, they did. So the state received a variance.
That's correct. It was in January, I think, twenty fifth of twenty seventeen.
Okay, they they requested one variance?
I don't recall. I'd have to look at the file.
Okay. But and it was granted, however.
Yes.
Okay. Were there, and I don't know if anybody can answer this, but at that time, does anybody either remember or know if the planning commission had the same kinds of concerns that they have about the school sign?
I can't answer that.
Tom?
I don't have that information.
Okay. Okay, I'm finished. Thank you.
Okay. Tom Manning, do we have any letters in the file other than than the planning letter?
I I don't think there were any others, Tom, Xaneri. Were there any others other than the planning and zoning commission comments that I read earlier?
There were no more communications.
Okay. All right. Does anybody else have any further questions or comments? Mr. Norris?
No, other than than to wrap up, you know, it was, this was probably the biggest, well, it was the biggest single project in Groton. I think it serves some recognition. I I understand that some coordination would have been valuable along the way. Unfortunately, we were dealt the cards that we were. So we're kind of coming to you with our hat in the hand as the last piece of this this thing, if you will. And I would just appreciate all due consideration. And thank you for your time.
Ed, could I ask, this is Tom Manning, could I ask a pointed question to Rick?
Absolutely. Go ahead.
If if it makes sense to at least have a discussion with the state on combining signs and hearing from them, you know, they may very well say, no, we're not interested in talking about it. But not to have that, to me, in light of the planning and zoning commission's comments, quite honestly begs the question of you know, this is a very intense intersection at the bottom of Fort Hill. I've been here forty years and I I've been through that many, many, many times. And you would, you need good signage there, especially for people trying to find the height, you know, the middle school or El Agroso or Sutton Park, you need something that isn't confusing. And I would say, just just to tip my hat, at a minimum, not not even reviewing the combination of the the park sign with the proposed sign is something that's unacceptable to me. And I'm just tipping my head, my feeling right now, so you understand that you're really, in my opinion, and this is part of the discussion, but in my opinion, I don't think you've done due diligence in presenting me anyway. I don't know about the rest of the board. Sufficient information to say that you have at least made an attempt to reduce the silence.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? Mr. Norris, one last chance?
No, no. You know, other than you know, things change. Parks change, other things change, and schools are here fifty years, plus or minus. What happens if we do something with with the park and it goes away, then we're stuck with what we have kind of thing again? I I don't know what else to say at this point, other than you know, that thought had run through my mind and I and I thought about it, but I couldn't find in my own mind, a way that that would do justice to the new school and provide information now. That sign that is there could become a wayfinding sign. Just as we do with with the school, there wouldn't be a sign at the entrance, but there would be a sign at the entrance to to Sutton Park, which would be up by their driveway, you know, a hundred feet up the road. I don't know if that would meet your desires or not, but we certainly could could look at that. We we could contact the state, obviously, and talk to them and we can look at other options with with that sign, if that's what the what the committee desires.
Scott, are you handed up?
No, no, I'm just looking, I'm just saying to Mr. Norris.
Okay, I thought you all wanted to speak.
No, I didn't. Neurophony.
If there are other questions.
Ed, if you could, Ed, this is Tom. If you could take the pulse of the the ZBA to see where they stand, because this might give Rick a chance to, if he wants to continue and find information, see where everybody stands. The rest of the board thinks that's a good idea or not.
I agree.
I'm not adverse to that. I mean, I think Tom has some serious concerns. I concerns about going from two to three signs. And I don't understand why Sutton Park and Groton Middle School can't somehow be incorporated as a single sign. And it's both important to the town of Groton. That may mean redesigning the sign completely. I don't know, but I have some concerns on.
Well, if I may, I'm sorry.
About continuing this. Tom?
Rick was trying to say something.
I I'm sorry, Ed, if I may interrupt a moment because things that we put on the property are are reimbursed by the state. We get a forty seven point five percent reimbursement. I believe that if we put, and I can check into this too, that if we put another sign on that sign, the town loses out on however many thousands of dollars in reimbursement for that particular sign. So that's just another another thing to throw out there.
I was going to say the same thing. I do. I do agree with Rick that based on our dealings with the state, not the state people that run El Agroso Technical High School, but the State Grants Department for Schools. uh, people that run Elagroso Technical High School, but the state Grants Department for schools, uh, that would put the reimbursement for this sign at jeopardy. Uh, they will, they will only approve it for the Groton Middle School sign. So that would be forty seven percent of the cost of the materials and construction and, um, labor for this sign.
So this is getting down to the financial situation.
That's not on our variance.
No, and it's, and it's not, and it's not a huge consideration, but it may be something that has to be explained to folks.
It's not written, but it's implied. Gentlemen, do you want to continue with this, or do you want to just close the public hearing? Tom Manning?
Um, well, under normal circumstances, we'd close the public hearing, we'd discuss it and, and then we'd vote. Uh, I thi- think you've raised the point with the, the Sutton being a town, the Sutton sign being a town sign. I mean, that, that to me is a no brainer. You could have a a Groton Middle School sign if, if the board decided to allow it. Uh, with a little tag along with an arrow or something. You'd have to get creative, but you could have, to me, that's not a big deal.
This is Tom Zanari, if I can interrupt. That, that's exactly what Rick and Amy said that uh, they couldn't do, uh, that the state would pull the money if it was anything other than just simply a Groton Middle School sign. So it's not really the the Groton School Board that they're concerned with. It's the state grants for, for signs for schools.
I under, I understand.
It's a whole different bureaucracy.
Yeah, that's the, the money aspect. I'm looking for safety. And I think we should be looking at trying to minimize the number of signs. That's why I'm saying maybe somebody in, you know, at the state would look at this, maybe a representative from the town could go approach the state and say, maybe it would make more sense if you get a little bit creative and look at a way to put the two net schools on one sign. I don't know if it's even possible. But I mean, at least to look at it, taking money off the table, not wor, not worrying about it because sure, it's our tax dollars, but to me, having one sign that is creative and directs you to two into two schools would make a heck of a lot more sense uh, if it could be done. And maybe the answer is, hell no, we're not interested. The state gets back. I could take that and say, okay, hey, we've made an attempt.
May I respond to that?
Yes.
Go ahead. Okay. Um, my concern, and, and I agree that less signs would be easier on the passersby and on people for wayfinding, um, and less dangerous. I, I do have a concern that if the two schools were to share a sign and both schools would want to maintain the ability to have digital messaging, you would end up with not the two back-to-back signs of digital, but you would have four. And I would be concerned that having digital signage one next to the other would be more dangerous for drivers. Uh, they'd be looking at both. And the message would be different on both. The timing of when the message gets replaced might be different on both. Um, so I do feel that for safety's sake, having the two digital display signs on opposite sides of that intersection of that street is safer. So I, I
Yeah, I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying at all. But I think having it documented that that is not what is the safest should be part of our review process. And, and I don't see it.
Okay. And we do, we do have contacts with that school and, and folks that work there. I mean, so it would be easier enough to make contact to do what you request.
That, that's all, all I have to say. We can, whatever the rest of the people want, it's fine.
Thank you.
Scott?
I would, I would suggest that we continue it and give, um, Mr. Norris and the, and the construction team the opportunity to, uh, address the Mr. Manning's concerns and others' concerns about all the signs. I, I personally am not troubled by that. I think you know, that having the Grasso Tech sign there, uh, and then telling the town they can't have one even smaller than that for an, an absolutely identical situation makes no sense to me, but, um, but give, I think we need to give them a chance, and Tom's right, then it's going to be on record, but the, this, it was approached and here's what happened. And I think it would help maybe conclude this in a better way.
Okay, so there's a consensus that we continue this to, uh, the next meeting, November alone?
Uh, just to be, uh, just to clarify, um, November eleventh is Veterans Day. Uh, so there's no meeting, so it would be, uh, November twenty fifth. That's the day before, yeah, there's one meeting in October, and I think I'm incorrect, Kara. The meeting in November is at the eighteenth?
The second. Second Wednesday in November is the eleventh.
Not Veterans Day, all right.
Yeah, the one that was approved, what happened to be Veterans Day. So I think we would have to make a special meeting for the eighteenth, I think it is.
Yeah.
Because or else it would be Thanksgiving.
What's on our, our approved twenty twenty year meeting schedule?
That it was approved as Veterans Day by accident.
Yeah, none of us caught it that it was a holiday.
Oh, for twenty twenty, not twenty twenty one?
Correct.
Twenty twenty, right.
All right, so.
So we'll have to make a special meeting for November eighteenth.
Okay. Is that, uh, do we need a motion?
Go ahead, Tom.
Do you want a motion to, uh, continue the public hearing? Keep it open until a special meeting, which will be scheduled for the eighteenth of November?
Okay, you're a second.
That's my motion.
Let's second it.
Okay, thank you, Floyd. Uh, any discussion? All in favor, Mr. Manning?
I'm in favor.
Mr. Russaro? Mr. Kravitz? Who else? I, myself. And, uh, is that a remaining Kravitz, Sorrow, and myself? Good. All right. So we'll continue this until, on the, November eighteenth. Thank you, Mr. Norris.
Oh, thanks, thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Okay.
Do we, do we, uh, look at the minutes from the?
Uh, let's see, so we have correspondence?
Uh, there's no correspondent.
No correspondence, okay. Uh, first would be the, uh, minutes of, uh, July twenty second, I believe.
Right.
Yes, July twenty second. Uh, is there a motion?
I, uh,
Scott, you made a motion?
Yeah, I moved that we accept the minutes as presented.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All right. Any discussion? In favor of approving the minutes for July twenty two, since what we're saying, aye, aye?
Aye.
Yep. Any, uh, opposition? Okay, so we move on to August twelfth. Uh, another motion we need?
I'll make a motion that we approve the August twelfth minutes.
I second it.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, aye?
Aye.
Okay. Moving along then to the last seven minutes, which was October fourteenth, our last meeting. Motion?
Uh, I moved that we accept the minutes as presented.
Second? Okay, so, just so soon. All in favor? Aye, aye. Post, aye. Okay, yes, you hear that? Uh, old business?
Uh, there's no old business?
No old business?
No old business. There's no new business?
There are no apps?
Um, Kara, there's, oh, there's one new application, uh, that came in, uh, for gosh, it's Crystal Lake Road. Um, it's going to be a big development, um, apartments. It's going to be a variance for height in a coastal area management, uh, application.
Okay, so is that on for December?
Yes.
Oh, okay, all right.
Will be, yep.
Um, now our twenty twenty one meeting schedule, do we not approve that? Or no?
No, we didn't approve it. There were, there were only three months.
I thought we had. I guess you've taken care of the right dates, right?
There's no holidays.
Okay, that's all that counts. So a motion to approve the twenty twenty one meeting schedule?
I make a motion, we approve it. Oops, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's all right.
I make a motion to approve the twenty twenty one schedule, meeting, meeting schedule.
All right, so motion made, second, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Post? Okay, uh, Tom Stafford report?
Uh, I just have one thing to report. Um, the last, not the last, but one variance that recently approved on, um, West Mystic Road. It was for the, um, addition that was very close to the property line. Um, that ended up getting appealed, uh, by the neighbor. Uh, and in the meantime of that, um, she appealed it, uh, there were attorneys were talking, and it turns out the, um, the property owner who requested the variance, uh, is not following through with it and he's going to sell the property. Uh, so it's possible that he wants to just kind of vacate the variance, uh, and we're going to have to do something uh, along those lines because it's not filed, uh, and it's just kind of hanging out there. So, um, I'm kind of in between discussions with our town attorney to have something presented to you, uh, to extinguish that variance. If, and we, he kind of wanted to get a uh, a feel, a barometer of how you guys, uh, feel about following through with that.
Was that Bank Street or West Mystic Avenue?
Um, I, you know, it's losing me right now. I think it was West Mystic Avenue.
I think it was, I think it was Bank Street, wasn't it?
It was seventeen Bank Street.
Bank Street, yeah.
Okay, sorry, Bank Street.
Have, have we ever been involved in a vacating, uh, a variance?
I don't think so.
I think we have been.
I mean, the variance goes to the property. I don't know.
Yeah, the, the attorney would draft something up and propose it to you and go from there, but, uh, it's just because you approved the variance, he wouldn't know how you felt about, you know, going through with, with, uh, rescinding it.
Hmm. Oh, that's interesting. They have done that before.
Because of the, the owner just doesn't want to follow through with it and he's selling the property, so that, that's the main reason.
So if we try to, is, so he's trying to sell the property, could he come back at us for rescinding it because of the variance goes with the property?
Um, not, he's, I think he's signing documents saying that, you know, filing as much that he's not going to do that and that it's selling the property. The problem with variances, as you know, is they run with the property, so uh, if he doesn't file it, it's hanging out there after he sells the property. Somebody that buys it could just, you know, swoop in and file it. And then it's a whole other thing. So just to kind of like tie it up the legal angles.
Yeah, let's hear from, yeah, let's hear from the attorney. Yeah.
Okay. That's all I have.
Can I ask you a question, Tom, about that, um, Crystal Lake Road development?
Yeah, sure.
Who the, who's, who's, who's submitting that, um, variance request?
Um, I, I don't know who the owner is. The, uh, attorney is, uh, Bill Sweeney. Representing them.
Yeah, I can, I think it's the company I work for.
Okay, oh, yeah, it is, it is. Right. He said it's the same people that building, yeah, you think so.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, because we, we own, we own, we're doing the property up on Pleasant Valley, but we've also bought the, that property across the street on Crystal Lake. Um, okay, I'd have to recuse myself from that.
Yeah. Okay, we'll make plans for that.
Oh, that's, I'm bringing it up now. I thought it sounded like what we were doing, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else? Motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
All right, okay, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay, at eight oh seven. Thank you all. Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Yara.
Have a good night, everybody.
Good night.
Thanks, thank you, good night. Okay.
See you guys soon.